This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levinson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Santos?
Here.
Mayor Hillcor?
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. To speak at first clock publicly invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first clock publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their list, their names on the list, will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at five o'clock publicly invited to be heard. We're also going to change the agenda and move publicly invited to be heard in front of the special reports and presentations. So Mayor, you have the minutes of May 13 to approve. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move we approve the minutes.
Second. Case been moved in second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. And next we have the minutes from June 10 for regular session to approve. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we approve those minutes as well.
All right, been moved in second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. So are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor, there are. For item 6C, the Lura item, there were two additional attachments that were emailed to council. They were also posted to the web. For item 8A, there are copies of a redlined revised ordinance that has been placed at council's dais. There's also a public copy available. For item 9B, the Director of Finance emailed various documents related to that item this afternoon. And then, item 11A regarding Portico, the annexation referral has been pulled at the applicant's request and will be rescheduled for a later date.
Great. Thank you. So I guess now we'll move to City Manager's report. Is there a report from City Manager?
No report, Mayor, council.
Okay. So now it's time for publicly invited to be heard. Do you have the list? Okay, first up is Bryce Feldman. Please come down and state your name and address.
Mayor, City Council? My name is Bryce Feldman. I live at 3135 Lake Parkway. I'm here to let you know my next haircut is scheduled for November. Now, the reason I mention that to you is I'm hoping several of you will join me in that to not schedule yours until then. As I understand it, a couple of you have agreed to do that. The mayor for one and the mayor pro tem is another. And the reason we're joining us is for the Longmont Humane Society, which provides a great deal of service to the city of Longmont. But they need our help. They have a monstrous mortgage payment due in November. And so a group of us got together and our goal is to raise $100,000 by November to help them meet that mortgage payment. In response, it's our organization we're calling Hair for Hounds. And information can be found at hairforhounds.com. There's eight or nine of us now who are letting our hair grow, including four women. And the women were given the option if they don't want their hair shaved, to have it cut short in just somewhat of a style. The, yeah. Councilmember Bagley, I know you've indicated you can't, because of your profession, you can't let your hair grow uncut till then. But you could grow a goat's hair and a beard and we could have a Gabe Santos look-alike contest.
I look more like Gabe than Gabe looks like.
And Councilmember Santos, you've done this in the past, so you're experienced at it. That would be good.
I won't go back.
But yeah, but for a few days, your hair, head would go, you know, uniform. And Councilmember Finley, you said you were close last time I talked to you. I'm signing up. I remember you could do it. Well, yes, I didn't have to shave it. We'll just cut it short. So, but what could use everybody's help was the donations. Like I said, hairforhounds.com. We have a long way to go on the fundraising and the Humane Society really, really needs our help. The hair cutting thing is just to draw some attention to it and to have some fun and a few laughs.
Thank you. Thank you, Bud. Sharon O'Leary?
Mayor Coombs and City Councilmembers, I'm Janu Ray, 534 N.A. Street. I'm here tonight to address item 9D, a bill to amend the municipal code on accessory uses regarding accessory dwelling losses. And I have a question that maybe you pull this item temporarily or hit the pause button and go back and educate the former neighborhoods. In many ways, I'm a member of the historic East Side neighborhood. And we were an organized neighborhood before Longmont even had a neighborhood group leading registered neighborhoods. And the city decided it was a good idea to have these registered neighborhoods to increase the lines of communication. And this line particularly, I think, really hits the mayor in the head. For years, anything that has to do with transition zones or accessory dwellings has always been a high priority for the historic East Side neighborhood. So I was thinking about if you had the planners go back, all forefront, not all backside, kind of telling how they're cleaning up the village in the intent and the direction from P to Z, and educate the neighborhood, and then get feedback from the neighborhood. It's going to wind up being a much better document, a much better ordinance, and a much better process that people feel like there are channels of communication, not just one line of communication. So if you could give that your thought for consideration when you come on to 9D, I'd greatly appreciate it. And I do appreciate the time you give every week. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Gordon Pedron?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Gordon Pedron, 2639 Falcon Drive. I'm here to speak with item 6C, the resolution to approve the development and financing plan for Village at the Peaks. As a 19-year city manager in this community, I worked with Alan Ginsburg on a number of occasions. He's the principal and managing director of Newmark, now Mountain States. I have very positive professional relationships with him and I respect him greatly. I want this project to succeed for him and for the citizens of Longmont. But as a clearly pleasure resident and taxpayer, I have a couple of concerns about your issue tonight and I would want to bring them to your attention. One was a public policy perspective and the other is a financing plan concern. Public policy, except for the theater, everyone that I have talked to about the tenant lineup that has been shown to you in your last page of your council communication tonight and in the newspaper I've seen on, they've been extremely underwhelmed with this lineup of tenants, except for the theater. And so there is a bit of concern, I think, on a number of people's part that a $27.5 million subsidy is going to this development with the tenant lineup the way it is right now. From a finance perspective, the next to last page of your council communication is a sheet listed as estimated sources and uses. Shows $89.3 million of resources and $89.3 million worth of potential expenditures. This here is that $27.5 million subsidy under the TIF bond offset. And there's another item there that concerns me. It's called additional city assistance with an estimated price tag of $400,000 to $900,000. But my team says this must be approved by the city council for the city to have the additional expenses. So before I approve this plan tonight, I just ask that you tell the citizens, are you going to commit that $400,000 so that we know the total cost of the subsidy that the city's going to put into this budget so that we have a sense of what the total cost may be? Thank you.
Thank you. So that ends publicly invited to be heard. So now it's time for the special reports and presentations. The city is accepting a certificate of achievement award and presenting a GFRA award of financial reporting achievement to the finance department for their work, which has been instrumental in the CAFRA being awarded the certificate of achievement.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. And I think the mayor covered it pretty well. But we have achieved the GFRA certificate of achievement for excellence in finance reporting for our CAFRA now for the 33rd consecutive year. This is for the 2012 CAFRA. Tonight, in the next item, you'll be presented with the CAFRA for 2013. Financial reports that qualify for this certificate provide a detailed vehicle by which market analysts, investors, potential investors, creditors, and others may assess the attraction of a government securities compared to other governments or other investments. In fact, after you accept or approve the 2013 CAFRA tonight, it's going to go to most of those listed types of parties in the morning for the certificates of participation that are also on the agenda for approval tonight. So this year, actually, we probably are, with the amount of activity we've had, with issuance of debt, is probably getting the most attention our CAFRA has compared to other years. So the CAFRA is judged by an impartial panel to meet the highly high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate the financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFRA. We are going to, as the mayor said, recognize the finance department. We want to specifically recognize Molly Costalecki, the Assistant Director of Finance, and as well, other members of the accounting division, including Keith Hopson, Brian McGill, Nancy Johnson, who've all been involved in putting together this CAFRA for a number of years, as well as the one that you'll be receiving tonight. But they are all responsible for the award that is being received tonight as well. So I have the plaque here from the GFRA and the mayor has the certificate for the finance department. And if we could maybe have Molly come down and we can take a picture and recognize her for this. And I don't want to point out, I'm only introducing the next item, but I've got to point out that this CAFRA that you're receiving tonight, a little bit later than normal and for a number of reasons, and Molly's really been putting in a heck of a job in the past year. She not only is responsible for putting together this CAFRA the other for 2013, but she's also been involved in all the floodwork and all of the efforts that we're making to get reimbursement from whatever means we can. As well as she's also leading up the financial system implementation, as she has been for a couple of years now. So it's just been incredibly busy year. And she just amazes me how she can pull all this off. And I think this CAFRA is only about a month later, or even two weeks later than what we did last year. So she's doing a great job. So I'll turn it over to her.
Okay, now that I have my props. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Molly Costalecki. I'm the Assistant Finance Director here with the city. And tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is the city's financial statements and other information combined into a 247 or 40-page document that we have spent the last, I don't know, six months putting together. This report has also been audited by the city's financial statement auditor. Kevin Smith from McGladrey LLP is here this evening and will be giving a presentation here in a minute. We'll be both available at the end of the presentations for questions. And then I also ask that the council accept this document at the end of this item. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is a report the city puts together at the recommendation of the Government Finances Association. It's a recommended practice to prepare this document, which has our financial statements and other financial and related information in it. The CAFRA contains four sections, an introductory section, the actual financial section, which has a financial statements, a statistical section, and a compliance section. One of the important items that's listed in the financial section is the management's discussion and analysis. And in that section, you will find information about how well the city did or did not do during the previous year. The statistical section also contains 20 or so statistical tables with various information, which also gives a good history of how things have gone over usually a 10-year period that's required. Other things that are different for 2013, we did implement one new GASB statement, if I could find it here off the top of my head, which really changed the look and the presentation of the statement in that position, which also looks like a balance sheet. And that's really what it is in the private sector. And then the other thing that you'll find that's different this year is we did have the flood of September 2013, which did impact the financial statements. And Kevin Smith will go over some more information about what that actually did. what that actually did. But those, we really report our impairment of assets in terms of an accounting gain or loss of those sorts of activities. So with that, I will turn it over to Kevin Smith of McLeodry for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I promise the presentation is not 247 pages like the CAFRA. It is a very, very high-level summary of the results of the audit. It's got a few financial schedules in there as well. Again, just giving you a very high-level summary of the activity from 2013. The results of the audit are, we're out here in both December and then also in the spring for several weeks. We take up a lot of time of the finance department staff and other departments, and we certainly appreciate all of the hard work that we and the cooperation that we receive from city personnel when we're here performing the audit. The result of the audit is, if you look in the in the CAFRA on page, I believe it's page 19, is where you see our, I'm sorry, page 17, where you see our opinion on the financial statements. So our opinion is what they call an unmodified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion. That is the highest level of an opinion that we can issue when it relates to the financial statements. So the opinion you see on there is a clean opinion. Also, there's a section in the back of the report, starting on 228, that is the result of the compliance audit. So on the audit, specific federal grant programs as required by the Office of Management and Budget. There were two specific grants that we tested this year. They're listed in the presentation, the Airport Improvement Grant, Federal Hazard Elimination Program Grant. Neither of these grants had any findings as a result of our audit, and the opinions that were issued on the programs were also clean opinions. There were also no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses reported in internal control in that section of the report as well. So very good results from a financial statement perspective and the compliance perspective. There's a few things here noted as far as the financial results go for 2013. Overall, governmental activities increased in net position about $10 million. And that's on a federal core basis of accounting, so that includes all of the debt and the capital asset activity of the city. Business-type activity decreased by about $5 million. So all of the enterprise funds in total decreased in equity about $5 million. Molly had mentioned the impact of the flood and the impairment that you see on some of the statements in the financial statements. And again, this is just an accounting loss. The losses that you see disclosed in the report is not a true picture of what the loss was to the city. It doesn't represent all of the costs that were incurred for cleanup. There's certain costs that aren't factored into, you know, when it comes to removing debris and things like that. There's certain costs that don't go into the analysis of the impairment. So what you will see is, in the governmental activities, so governmental funds, there's a loss of $3.3 million, which was offset by that $4 million of insurance proceeds. And then the enterprise funds had an $8 million loss as well, and that was offset by, it would have been higher, but it was offset by a million dollars of insurance proceeds. You can see the change. The next bullet just talks about the change in the governmental funds, fund balance. We'll see the general funds increase by about $2.2 million, street system by about the same amount, and other governmental funds by about a $4.2 million increase. The general fund budget expenditures were within budget. Again, the last bullet page just talks about the outstanding debt of the city. The bonds that are outstanding are rated by S&amp;P and Moody's. For the most part, sometimes just one of the agencies rates the bonds, but all of the outstanding debt is rated A or higher by one of those agencies. This next slide shows all of the governmental funds, the total revenue, the history over the past few years. A very slight change in most of these categories. Total revenue increased from about $101 million to $105 million. Most of the areas were relatively consistent with a slight increase in tax revenue. Expenditures, you saw a decrease for all of your governmental funds, from about $107 million to $98 million. Pretty slight increases or decreases in most of those functions that you see presented. This slide just shows the general fund balance by category. So these different categories represent the spending constraints that are within those funds. So about, the total fund balance in general fund at the end of 2013 was $17.5 million, about 6.8 million of that. So just over a third, about 39% of that is unassigned. So that can be spent at the discretion of the city. The other areas that you see, the committed and the restricted, the restricted is what's restricted, the table restriction for emergencies, and the committed are items that are committed for future projects that have already been committed. And that represents about 35% of your total fund balance. For the enterprise funds, we've got a schedule here that shows operating income, which is the first group of bars there. Two of the enterprise funds, the operating income was operating at a loss, but when you take out depreciation expense, which is a non-cash item, and is excluded when the rating agencies look at a lot of their calculations, all of the entities, a lot of the enterprise funds were operating with positive net income. And looking at cash flows from operations, all of them are generating sufficient cash flows as well. The other item, in addition to the CAFRA that you see in your packet, is a report that's titled Report to the Attorney General, Mayor, and Members of City Council. This report here would discuss any sort of significant issues or difficulties that we had in performing the audit, and there were none of those to report. It does mention the implementation of one new GASB standard this year that the mayor mentioned. Again, not a real significant impact on the financials, but it was adopted as it was required by GASB. There's only one general entry that we proposed as a part of the audit, and it wasn't a significant entry, but you'll see that disclosed in that report as well. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on either the CAFRA or the report.
Congressman Harrison?
Thank you. I was really interested in the way you broke out, and I can't remember what page it was on, debt by individual member. And so, when you look at cities like, I don't know, I should maybe not mention Detroit again, but, you know, what's an unsafe debt level? Ours is around $900 per person, and I saw it went as high as over $1,000 at other times in the past 10 years. So what's an unsafe debt level per person?
And I think you were talking about the schedule in the back with the per capita.
Per capita.
You know, it's not concerning enough for the rating agencies to give you anything below the A rating. So I would say that because of that, you're at the safe level. I don't know about dollar amount exactly that you would fall into a lower category.
I just wonder how much headroom we have on debt capacity per capita.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I could get some comparisons to some of the other cities and provide that to Molly.
Oh, I'd just be interested because I wonder where we stand with comparatives. And we look at total debt, household debt, government debt, per capita, you know, how much debt burden can you have per capita? It's always been a question I wanted to ask. So if you can get something on that, that would be great. Thanks. But it was very interesting to see that number broken out like that.
I have a question. On your previous slide, you have a very small, like 1% that's non-spendable, little brown bar, maybe it was before that one, yeah, that one. What is the definition of non-spendable? Is that table or?
No, those are assets that aren't converted into cash. So those are prepaid expenses. That's the bulk of that. It's a very small.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Don't leave for the questions. Great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember family?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we accept the CAFRA.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Let's vote. Seven to zero. I'd just like to commend Jim Golden and Paulie and all the people that worked real hard, particularly with all the stuff going on with the flood. Everybody grabbed two jobs and sometimes three jobs. So it's just amazing that we did such a terrific job, and these employees are just absolutely amazing. So I guess we're at the second reading.
Yeah, item C is your Longmont Urban Renewal Authority?
Oh, okay. A big one. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as a Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, pass a seven to zero. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Lower Board of Commissioners, David Sims, Lower Executive Director. Tonight, we have before you the development and financing plan for Village at the Peaks. When we acquire this, a redevelopment reimbursement agreement that was adopted back in January 2013 between Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, the City of Longmont, Newmark Mall, Mountain States, and the 23th Metropolitan District is for a developer to prepare and submit to RRA a development financing plan. Lower the city staff has reviewed the developer's plan that was submitted on A6, 2014, according to requirements of Exhibit D of RRA, which are attached in your packet. I will be there through reasonable and reasonable requirements of the plan. The question of mine, this is unsatisfied. This requires that there is expected to be sufficient revenue derived from construction of the private improvements to pay the debt service requirements on the bonds. City staff has conducted a financial analysis of the project based on approximately 480,000 square feet of space and finds that there will be sufficient revenue from tax increment, Metro District no levy, and a portion of the city's non-earmark sales tax to service the debt on the bonds. And if you, I have a brief slide that kind of summarizes this. So you'll see here, the slide shows on the left-hand column in terms of the table, based on a projected strategic participation, the $27.5 million budget cost over 24-year period with the total debt service will be and how much revenue will be generated. There's four sources of budget revenue, the first being tax increment, and that equals about $32.2 million. The second is the non-earmark city sales tax portion, that's approximately $59.4 million. The third is the 25 mills that, as per the district no levy assessed to the property, that's about $13.7 million over 24 years. And the fourth piece is the 6% district special ownership tax assessed, that's approximately $823,000. When you add those together, it's about $106 million. Based on our discussions with our underwriters, the initial COP, in terms of the payments for the $27.5 million bonds, about $49.3 million on debt service. And so we've got a present city surplus of $43.2 million. There's also additional city revenue. This mainly relates to the base tax that goes to the increment, but it goes to all the taxing entities, including the city, the county, the school districts, and the water districts. The city's portion receives about $13.4 million, equals to about $2.4 million. The city also receives the base sales tax, and that's to 43.275%. Over 24 years, about $18.1 million. And the last piece is the sales tax increment that is earmarked, that will continue to flow back into the city, to about $37.9 million over 24 years, total of $38.4 million. So if you add on the city surplus plus the additional potential city revenue, we're looking at approximately $116.6 million in revenue, to give you a perspective of how this project is expected to perform based on estimates we've generated so far. So moving on to requirement number two. Requirement number two has been satisfied. This requires that the developer have obtained executed leases or sale agreements with the following types of tenants. One, a large theme of general merchandise retailer occupying at least 100,000 square feet of space, which is projected to generate at least $400 of taxable sales per square foot. Two, a stadium-style film theater with a number of touchscreen screens containing at least 50,000 square feet of space, which is projected to generate at least $35 of taxable sales per square foot. And three, an executed business for the metro grocery store containing at least 20,000 square feet of space, and which is projected to generate at least $540 of taxable sales per square foot. Moving on, I will do requirement number three and number eight at the end, since there's some open discussion on that one. Requirement number four has been satisfied. This requires that the developer use commercial reasonable efforts to ensure that 80% of the uses and the non-earmark improvements, this is aside from the three acre tenants that were mentioned, shed a little to the city of Longmont. If you're looking at that, the developers have gathered a mutual analysis that shows the breakout of new kindness to Longmont based on, you know, great expansion of new. Requirement number five, this has also been satisfied. This requires that the developer provide a schedule of construction of the private and public improvements of the redevelopment project. You'll see in the packet tonight that the schedule is attached as well. Requirement number six has been satisfied. This requires that the developer provide cost estimates, including all reasonable and necessary soft costs necessary to construct the public and private improvements. There's also an exhibit in your packet that includes the public costs, I think total of about approximately $89.3 million. Requirement number seven, this has also been satisfied. This requires that the developer provide grace for commitments of construction and completion of construction of the three acre tenants and public improvements required to construct each of the private improvements. And requirement number nine is also unsatisfied. This can include a list of all contingencies and conditions that must be satisfied or raised prior to the initial ongoing financial funding required for the construction of the improvements. So I move on to requirement number three and the three, which are essentially similar. So we are waiting for final verification of certain criteria. These requirements require that the developer provide evidence of financial and financial commitments, such as construction management or other evidence that shows the developer will achieve completion of construction of required public and private improvements. We are waiting for the developer to provide evidence of sufficient equity. We will see if this is a transition of the equity being funded for this project, and if this information will be brought to the city in RRA, and may be made on July 14th, and will occur prior to the city beginning to market the COPs. Attorney General Paulie is here this year, and is there to answer any questions you can have about this equity consideration, or about any other questions regarding the project. And with this, I think we'll take some questions and come back at the end in terms of the motion you can act on.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. David, can you explain to me what the district's special ownership tax is and what the source of it is?
Yes. Viva had her hand come up and explained that it's 6%.
Okay.
Sorry, put in a spot.
Yeah. The district special ownership tax, that's, to my knowledge, that's a tax that the district imposes on the property.
But you're the district.
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, so you're taxing, is that above and beyond the mill levy then?
No.
Okay, so that's included within the mills. Okay, I just didn't see it, I don't remember it being called out specifically like that differently. So that's why I asked.
Go ahead.
Mayor Coombs, here with council. Maybe I can clarify that a little bit more. So special ownership tax is the tax on vehicle registrations. And all government entities are allocated a portion of the special ownership taxes. So creating the Metro District, Metro District is entitled not just to the tax that they levy for their
to the tax that they levy, um, for their O&amp;M and debt service, but they also receive a portion of, uh, of the special ownership taxes based on the amount of their mill levy. So, uh, that's also dedicated to the debt service, though.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Other questions from here, from Sigensborg?
Councilmember Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. For some reason, I'm tired at an early hour tonight, and I am struggling to stay awake. Yeah, I guess my, I guess the one, the one, the one question, and it's fairly big, vague, and open, and that is, I just want to hear from city staff and from Alan Ginsborg that we approve this, it's a go. 100%, no ifs, ands, or buts, we're moving forward. Because the last thing we want to do is to approve this and then something blow up on us. So I know we've had, I've received reassurances, but I want a recording for my posterity.
So I think there's also item three and eight that need to be discussed in terms of the, the equi... um, the equity component that David touched on, that Mr. Ginsborg will need to talk about in more detail, and I'm sure he can answer that question. And then, um, part of the answer to your question will come with, from David, as he goes over the options that council has in the approval process.
And so my question is, before we hear from Mr. Ginsborg, so are we voting tonight on this, even though there's still a question mark with three and eight? Is that what staff wants us to?
Um, one of the options that will be proposed tonight is to approve subject to modifications. And one of the modifications that I mentioned is that we receive evidence of sufficient equity by, uh, before July 14th. So that's one option that you may have.
Which is before we market the COPs, it's before you go into market.
So that would be, we approve it, subject to three and eight, coming to fruition prior to the 14th of July.
Correct.
And if we do that, then my question becomes to the city and Newmark Merrill, is that we are, we are a go, it's 100%, you know, damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead.
So from the city's standpoint, if they have the equity in place that's required, we're a go. If the equity's not in place, that's required, we're a no-go. That's the condition on the approval of this process.
So the question becomes, is equity going to be in place? And Mr. Ginsborg, are we a go? Well, thank you for asking very pointed questions. I would expect no less from you. Uh, no problem. Uh, yes, um, the project's a go. Uh, we've already, uh, begun to mobilize, uh, we've already let our, uh, early demolition agreements, we've already notified, uh, power, uh, we should have, uh, yesterday notified power and gas that we're going to sever services. And effectively, um, all we're waiting for now is our lender's condition that the bond funds be placed, um, in the, uh, funded and in the account, and your staff work very diligently as, as Jim and Aaron DeWiser, you're outside experts on this, to, to pull this all together so that we'll be in a position to, uh, commence demolition here in July. So that's definitely a go. We're very committed to this community. We have been, we continue to be, and I will continue to be. So we're not going anywhere. Uh, so that's a go. Uh, we raised equity prior to funding the construction loan, that's always how we fund it. It's the way we came through and bought the property, it's the way we funded the billards, and that's the way we'll fund it this time, and on the 14th, we will have the equity required to fund the project. Cool. Am I allowed to make a motion at this point?
Sure.
Okay, then with that, I would move, uh, our, our LURA 2014-06 conditioned upon three, uh, conditioned upon requirements three and eight being met prior to July 14th of the year 2014. Is that what you needed?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Moore. Or Chairman Moore.
Chair.
Commissioner.
Excuse me. Commissioner. Commissioner Moore.
This is a que... question related to requirement number three. Uh, on the project sources and uses worksheet that was given to us, there are variable ranges indicated in the equity and the city assistance lines. Uh, when are those going to be finalized?
Again, I would look to Mr. Ginsborg here, one second.
So, to answer your question, Councilmember Moore, uh, the final equity is determined when we have our final building bid, we have our site construction bid now, so we know those costs with certainty, we're working on getting the final building, uh, bids in. We'll have those in, um, by early next week. And that will determine for us, in terms of the equity we need to fund, because until we know that final building cost number, the equity is variable. Because the project cost is variable, dependent upon that bid. So that, that's exactly where that is right now. It's taken longer than we expected because we had, uh, the good, the good happenstance, the Whole Foods wanted to change their, their building at the last minute, which threw all that process back a bit, and then also Regal wanted to make some changes to their theater building, which, you know, clearly are going to produce a better, uh, theater than any, any other community has in Colorado today. So those changes kind of toyed with our bidding bid, otherwise we'd have had bidding in by now. But all that said, we'll still get it here fairly quickly.
So they're here next week?
Well, yeah, we'll be getting our bids in, and, uh, we'll be getting closer to the point where we know what our final equity requirement is. Well, once we get the bids in, we have to level the bids, and then we have to go back and negotiate with the contractors. So that process probably takes about three weeks.
So that, that takes us up to July 10th?
That's right.
Where we have to make the commitment on the bonds.
July 14th, we have to fund the equity, and that's why I said July 14th, we'll be here to fund the equity, regardless of the amount. So we put a variable number in there, because today I can't give you a precise number.
We also have a variable number for city assistance.
Yes. And that, that comes out of my, uh, want, desire, perhaps fantasy, um... Nothing more, that, uh, we've, we've asked people to consider that, uh, and it's thoroughly up to the people in front of me today to make that decision on their own, and I've just provided this in, in this document so that there's flexibility in it today. But clearly, you know, whether those funds arrive or not, uh, we're, we're prepared to fund the equity required to build the project. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question, uh, for you, Alan. When things change, like the theater seating gets upgraded, um, did you have a lot of, like, sunk costs into your internal design that had to all been redone, and, uh, can you kind of quantify that for us, when, you know, like quantify what happens when Whole Foods say they want their store 30% bigger, how does that affect the work you've already done, your sunk costs?
Well, we've gone through construction documents, and, uh, so we already had construction documents designed, um, for that building and for that whole wing of the building. So we have to go back through and re... basically rebuild the construction documents from the ground up, and even look at the civil plans and so forth. Dollars and cents, it's, it's probably less than $100,000 to go through that, but it takes about five, six weeks, because it's very detailed work on the part of the architect to do that. So, that, just to accommodate Whole Foods' change, and Regal's, you know, not quite that order of magnitude, but it's surprisingly, you know, more complicated than I'd like to admit, to, to give them what they want.
Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I, I'm just going to hop back on, uh, Jeff's, um, comments, uh, Councilmember Moore's comments, um, around the additional city assistance. You know, I, I know we've, we've done a lot of, um, of two-step dancing over the last couple of years, and I think that the city has acted always in good faith and, and kept open lines of communication, and, um, you know, it's been a bit of a concern of mine that we're, we're actually putting up city buildings that were paid with bond money and bonds that city residents voted on allowing us to do. And so I take very seriously the COP issue, because, again, we're putting up the jewels in the crown and, um, putting them as collateral, and I think that that's a very serious aspect of the deal. And I, I just want to publicly stress that, you know, we are doing, um, kind of the, the ultimate of, um, mortgaging real estate, essentially, and leasing it back. Um, and I know we've done that on a small scale, um, with leasebacks on, uh, fire stations, so we have an ability to build a new fire station, but this is a, a much different, uh, matter altogether. And so I, I think that, that 27.5 million plus of all the costs we've gone through and cooperated with is, um, a good number, and as far as the additional city assistance, um, you know, we all know what construction costs are these days, and the city's facing that too, and, um, uh, I just, uh, hope that you can get good costs in, and, um, I'm just not willing to have too much more added to the bottom line for the city. And I know that we'll perhaps have some additional revenue coming in with the Whole Foods' expansion, but, you know, we, we don't even have a store open yet, and so that's an unknown quantity. And, um, we have to protect, we have a fiduciary responsibility, not only to LURA, but to the general fund of the city, um, and I just want to honor that and make sure that, that we're doing our due diligence on this. So, um, I'm, I'm not really much in favor of, uh, a lot of extra slush money, because we don't have a lot of water in the tank to slash around right now. The other, uh, the other part of it is that perhaps you should have picked a different date, because, you know, and, uh, July 14th, you know, being Bastille Day, uh, I guess if this doesn't come through on July 14th, there, there might be a storming somewhere in the city of Longmont. Um, I, we don't have a Bastille, but, uh, I imagine there'll be pitchforks and, and people in the streets after us if we don't get this done. So, yes, due diligence and, you know, speed is of the essence, and I know you're aware of that, but, um, I find it humorous that you picked that significant day, and, uh, I'm just hoping that, that no one goes after us the way they did in France many centuries ago.
Thank you, and I, I understand the, the gravity of what you're doing, and, you know, we take, I, I take it personally very seriously. Um, the, the commitment your council has made to, to seeing us through this journey, and it's been a journey, and an arduous journey, is, is laudable. You've all done a, 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 a good job of working through issues that are complex and difficult. And, uh, Sandy and I have no intent of doing anything less than producing the project we promised, you know, hopefully overproducing, uh, so that you'll say, ah, those guys did what they said they did, and they, and they actually did more. And that's, that's the way we've operated, that's the way other cities will tell you we've operated with them, and, and, and Gordon, who's had experience with this, can, can vouch for that. So I, but I appreciate the gravity of what you're doing, and that it's not a casual endeavor at all, and I take it personally very seriously. So I appreciate what you're doing, and thank, thank the community.
Okay, I guess we've got a motion, it's been seconded, shall we vote? Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
So I have a question for, uh, just a clarification for Eugene. My understanding is, if we do want to have the tools in place to do additional, um, funding by fee waivers, then we have to have, right now legally, we can't, until another ordinance would be brought forward. So I'm, I'm not saying that I'm necessarily for that, but I'm also like to be proactive and actually have the tools in place in case we needed, something came up that gave us that option, if we wanted to waive fees in the future, is, is that correct?
Mayor and council, Eugene May, city attorney. One word, yes, mayor, that's correct. Under the current existing Longmont Municipal Code, there's no mechanism to, uh, grant those fee waivers.
Okay, and then, so you'd have to, first we'd have to recommend that you bring that back as staff, and then it would go through a first reading, a second reading, and then it has to be, uh, approved by supermajority, a five to, to two vote, is that correct?
So mayor, a couple of questions in there. On the first part of your statement, yes, council would need to approve by ordinance, two readings, the creation of a program to grant the waivers. Uh, what the criteria for those waivers are, you know, is subject to development by staff in consultation with city council. Uh, depending upon how you set up that program, the actual approval of the waivers, uh, currently as, as the Economic Development Incentives Chapter has set up in the Longmont Municipal Code 4.72, it's supermajority. Council could certainly choose to retain that approval standard under any new program that it creates.
Okay. Well, I guess with that is, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to at least begin to bring that tool to... first, not that it means that we're going to approve it, or, um, that it's, uh, you know, a done deal, but it, it does give us an option if we need it in the future. Councilmember Santos.
Mayor, I will second that for discussion.
Okay.
So, mayor, um, are you talking about within an urban renewal area?
Yeah, just specific for an urban, you know, a large-scale project that's in an urban renewal, because we wouldn't want to make it just an open, um, thing for all retailers for, you know, it's just a major game changer. I mean, you saw the, the numbers, um, that David Starnes presented, and it looked like a good financial, a win-win for everybody. And I'd hate to see, if something unforeseen happened, and for some reason we were a few hundred thousand dollars short of this project going south, that we didn't have the tool in place.
So, uh, what I'm... So, from your motion on getting something within an urban renewal area, um, some sort of, in that area, that, that staff can work on and try to find some sort of parameters that gives them some, to bring back to council, so we can try to hammer out and then go through...
Yeah.
Some sort of discussion.
Right.
And ordinance.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it takes a, an executive session or something like that to figure...
Or study session, then ordinances, and then go from there up. I understand.
Councilmember Robinson.
You know, mayor, uh, chairman, um, I, I have real difficulty with this, because we have 400 acres in the, um, southeast urban renewal area, that we have zoned mixed use, and this would open up a can of worms, especially with the complications in that area, and for what you consider a large-scale, uh, project, to also put at risk, um, revenue and, um, and permit fees and all kinds of other revenue sources for LGDA. And I think that it's a longer process than maybe some envisioned, because when you've got 400 acres, and we're going to make this change, you know, potentially make a change on this scale, it's, um, it's a global scale you have to look at, not just to benefit one single project. And it would be an enormous sea change, and I don't think it's, we're really looking at something, um, that might be a, a short-term request, triggering something that could have very serious long-term, um, revenue and financial implications, not just for the city, but for the, the business district within, um, LGDA, and LGDA itself, being on their second generation of a district, we are aware that their revenue from the increment has been radically, um, uh, downgraded because of, uh, state statute. So I, I, I would not want to do, uh, potential further harm to the Downtown Development Authority, and then perhaps, um, stymying, um, moderate-sized developers that might have very good products also, and just looking for the super scale means the small guys lose out, the big guys win big time. And I think that's not an environment that's very business-friendly for the entire community.
Commissioner Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, point of order, I think that your motion is out of order, because we're talking about city council business. So I would actually move that we adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council, and then you can make that motion, and then we can get on.
Like that? Showing off the progress from lower.
Very good. Okay, let's vote on that. Yes, no, because it's not a valid motion.
We could do it here, we could do it at the end.
Okay, now we're adjourned as City Council, so I'll make that motion that we direct staff to bring back an ordinance that might, that would allow us to potentially offer fee waivers for a large-scale urban renewal project, you know, with the proper bumpers. So that's my, yeah. And we got a second from Councilmember Santos. So, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And by the way, I was just kidding you about the whole lot of order thing. I don't think Eugene would have come after us with the order police. Maybe, maybe. But I guess the, I'd be open to it, because I can think of a lot. I guess what I would like to see is, first of all, I don't know who said it, but it wasn't me, but anybody in town who wants to come and put 85, 89 million dollars into a project will consider, will consider ponying up and subsidizing a whole lot. So, consider being the key word. But then the other thing is, I just think that it would be nice to have, to know where we stand. I think Councilmember Levinson has some good points. I don't think we're going to start doing this with everybody, right? We can't, it's inappropriate. At the same time, we can't be arbitrary, we have to be fair. And so it would be nice, I'd like to know the answer. What would it look like? We did some pretty creative ordinance passing, for example, on the LDDA project with the Roosevelt Apartments. So I'd like to know what would it look like? Could it look like something? And then at least that way, we can have the information and then go for the debate. I wouldn't be for passing anything tonight, I haven't given it much thought, but, no, I mean, not your motion, I mean approving additional funds. But I wouldn't have a problem with setting the stage and having city staff put some thought into it. Say again?
Need the data.
Yeah, just need the data. So I'd support that, Mayor.
And it also would still be a supermajority, so it's the highest standard. Okay, so we've got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes four to three. Okay. You want to continue the presentation?
May, the next item on your agenda are ordinances on second reading and public hearings. Item 8A is ordinance 2014-31, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a 10-foot-wide electrical and water line easement and a 20-foot drainage sanitary sewer and water line easement for lots 1H and 2H, Replat H and Lot 4A of Replat A of the Twin Peaks Mall subdivision generally located at 1250 South Hoover Street. Eva Pahajewski will have a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Councilmembers. Eva Pahajewski, Planning and Development Services. You have a revised ordinance on the dais tonight. This was requested by the developer. It's a minor change, it's just some language change. I just want to point it out to you what that change is. It's related to the timing of the recordation of this ordinance. The original condition of approval on the original ordinance that you received in your packet stated that the vacation of the easements was not effective until construction acceptance of the utilities. This new condition that you have before you changes Section 2, Letter B, and says that upon approval of the ordinance, the ordinance shall be recorded. And so change to Section 3 as well says regarding the effective date, changed from the date the ordinance is recorded to the date the Planning and Development Services Director certifies satisfaction of the conditions of the ordinance, and the memo of satisfaction is recorded by the county clerk. So those are just the two minor changes to the ordinance, and that's all we have.
Okay. I'll open this up for public hearing. Is anybody from the public would like to speak on this at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll, oh, there is one. So we got Bill Coleman.
Bill Coleman, 915 Hoover. And actually, I'll decline my opportunity to comment after your end presentation.
Okay, thank you. See, can I have a motion? Councilmember Bagley.
I move that we pass ordinance 2014-31.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Let's vote.
Mayor, could you move to substitute the ordinance and then move to approve?
Okay.
See, you had to get in it, didn't you? You just had to get in it. I move ordinance 2014-31 as amended.
Okay. Okay, the amended ordinance has been moved in second. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor, item 8B is ordinances 2014-32 through 34. They are all building code items, and Chris Allison is here for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. Chris Allison, building official. One thing I'd like to bring up before we get started is, on the council communication, I need to explain, one of the sentences that was in there was kind of a holdover from previous code language. And so I had a comment in here that some of these regulations may not sync with Longmont power communication. I don't know where that came from. It's been there for forever, so I just wanted to clear that up, that I don't know anything in particular that does not sync. As far as I know, it's either Longmont Power is going to take care of any of the issues or it's going to be building inspection. So, so now that we've got that taken care of, I don't really want to add any to your evening, length of your evening tonight, so I'll keep this really brief. What we did was, we had three different items we were looking at. One is the adoption of the National Electric Code, which we do every three years. And we did redo that, and we only had, I think there was one amendment left in that code from previous, the previous code. And what we did was, we added a couple of more amendments, but what we did was, we tried to think of how this could help the contractors that are out there. So the amendments that we put in are to help ease cost as well as installations. And so there's a couple of amendments in there that that's what that was designed to do. Another thing that we looked at, ordinance that we looked at was the contractor licensing ordinance. So the ordinance was put together in the mid-'80s, and nothing's been changed since. And so this is the first time we've kind of overhauled some of it since then. And so what we tried to do is, we looked at liability insurance, and also since then there's, there was some language in there that, you know, we don't really see much anymore. It was like stucco, interior stucco, which doesn't laugh in plaster, stuff like that, just doesn't happen very often. So what we did is we amended some of that language to, you know, meet current terms and everything that we use today. And then we also added a couple of, or I think there's maybe three more specialty licenses. And what we were trying to do is, it's kind of one of those things where they had slipped through the cracks before, it just, there really wasn't anything specific for it. And so what we tried to do is, is make certain item, if they're doing that type of work, I think one of them was like fencing, you know, just hadn't gotten put in there. So what we tried to do is add a category for fencing. The other thing that we changed is we had some, if everyone remembers, a couple of years ago when we did our code amendments, there were some, there was some wording in there that, there was a couple of typos, and there was also some wording that, at the time, we thought it made it clear, but in reality, it confused it. And so we had a lot of questions from engineers in regard to wind speed and how they were going to engineer buildings. And so what we did is we went back and just rewrote that, you know, those parts to really say what it was that we needed. So what we tried to do is clarify most of the stuff that was in that, in that section. And I think we also added another way for, in the previous building code, residential building code, it required basements to have drywall, unfinished basements to have drywall on the ceiling. And so we'd made an amendment back on, with the 2015 code, or 12 code, when we adopted it. We had an amendment that made it easier for contractors to do that without having to drywall that whole ceiling and then just tear it back down. So what we did is we added another one. At the time, these fire-rated floor joists were not really readily available, which they are now. And so what we did was, we put another amendment in to allow those joints to be used over a mechanical room. And so anyway, so again, it was all designed to help with cost, and it just made sense to do some of those. So anyway, that's really all I had, and I'm here for any questions you've got.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Allison? Okay, I'll open this up for public hearing on ordinances 02014-32 through 02434. Is anybody from the public would like to speak on these ordinances at this time? Please come forward.
Mayor Coombs, Council of Berkeley, 2718 Villanova Court, Longmont. My question is, if you're changing the contractor license program, how do existing licensed contractors know that that is changing so that they'll be in compliance with the new standard? Are we notifying them? Did we get their input as we move forward? I just have some friends that are contractors, and I just, they need to have a heads up on how to deal with it. So I just wanted to ask the building official that question.
Okay.
Yes, I answered that question. What we did is we invited contractors in and went over the changes that we were proposing with them. I'm trying to think if there's, the liability insurance was one of the things that would change for pretty much everyone across the board. When I called the insurance companies, the amount that's required now versus what we were going to be going to, they said was negligible from, they said most of their policies are already written that way. And yes, we do have like a contractor licensing requirement every June 30th, so as contractors coming in, you know, we are going to give them this information once we know it's approved.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on these ordinances at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming Eugene would like to have us take these one at a time. So I would move ordinance 2014-32.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2014-33.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2014-34.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? Is that okay with everybody?
Changes that may make sense for this area, you know, for example, during the larger comprehensive plan update that we hope to undertake next year, we may identify additional changes to land use or the transportation network or other elements in the study area. But we did not propose anything that was not supported by a property owner. So you won't see anything here that is a staff proposal that's contrary to the wishes of a property owner. We didn't feel like that was council's direction and so we didn't undertake those types of changes. I'd also like to note that we met with staff from the Longmont Area Economic Council on several occasions, as there's quite a bit of land in this study area that is currently designated as industrial economic development. They have seen the final proposal, but we have not gotten formal comments from their board. So we do anticipate that LAEC staff will be here on second reading and public hearing on the 8th to provide, they may provide other additional comments. We presented these proposed changes to the Planning Commission at their May 21st meeting and again, an additional change last week at the July 18th meeting. The Planning Commission voted seven to zero for the majority of changes. They had a conditional approval. The conditional approval was the result of one property owner removing their request, and I can go through that if you're interested. And then last week on June 18th, they also voted seven zero to recommend approval of an additional change, which I'll show you on the next slide. This map here depicts the changes that are proposed as part of this sub-area update. As I mentioned, the changes fall into two categories. Those are what we call housekeeping amendments and then the proposed changes. These are labeled as such on the map. I think you can probably see it a little bit better in your pocket and maybe on your screen than what, than what we're seeing on this screen. But just to clarify, housekeeping changes are really those that are, that have been proposed by staff and they're basically correcting inconsistencies on the map. So these are areas where the existing land use doesn't match what's shown on the map. You probably recall that during some of the updates for Mill Village, we heard that the land uses that are there don't necessarily match what the neighborhood looks like today. So these changes are labeled as housekeeping and they include changes three, six, eight, nine, and 10. I can go through those if you'd like, but I think that they're pretty self-explanatory. The other set of changes are those that were requested by property owners or staff and those changes are labeled as proposed changes. So I'll go through those quickly. Change one is on the north side of 119, east of County Line Road. This is a change from industrial economic development to high-density residential. This change was requested by a potential buyer of this property with consent from the existing property owner. The property is currently zoned business light industrial, so changing the land use would really make the LACP land use inconsistent with the rezoning. There's a couple of these that you'll see. City staff recognizes that, you know, we don't really like to have inconsistencies between the land use map and the rezoning map. What we talked about with Planning Commission is our hope is if city council ultimately approves these proposed changes, staff would be directed to bring back rezonings for the properties where land use and zoning is now inconsistent. We didn't want to presuppose that either Planning Commission would recommend or city council would approve land use amendments and bring rezonings in conjunction. So that's why, that's why that's like this. Change number two is a proposed change from medium density to industrial economic development. This is just north of the site we just talked about, right south of Union Reservoir. This again is a change that was requested by the property owner, but staff had also identified this change early on. This property is currently zoned business light industrial, but is designated on the comp plan as medium density residential. So this land use change would actually make the land use consistent with existing zoning. Number three is a housekeeping change. Proposed change four is a change requested by the property owner. This is directly west of County Line Road, south of 119. And this is about two acres of property that's currently designated as industrial economic development. Property owner has requested to change to medium density residential. The property owner owns an additional approximately three to four acres. This is all one property. Part of the property is designated as medium density already, so this would just make the entire property medium density. Change number five is a proposed change to add a proposed neighborhood or district park symbol to the comp plan map. The recently approved Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Master Plan identified a future park in this area. This is P5 for any of you that are tracking the Parks, Trails, Recreation, and Trails Master Plan. So this site for the future district or neighborhood park hasn't been specifically identified, but the plan states that it would provide a local park in this area to serve the identified gap area in this part of the city, particularly if it can be located close to Mill Village. So that's what that park symbol is. Proposed change seven is located west of the neighborhood park symbol that we were just talking about. And that is a change requested by the property owner to change about 19 acres that is currently industrial economic development to medium density residential. You'll recall that this site came before you several months ago as a proposal to change to high-density residential, and that was a proposal that was rejected by council. So this change is to medium density residential. This is another one where if this change is approved, the zoning would be inconsistent. So if approved, staff would recommend that, you know, council directs staff to bring back a rezoning to make this consistent with the new land use. And then finally, change number 11 is a one acre property that is north of 119, east of County Line Road. It's a little square that you can see on the map. And that change is proposed to change, again, one acre from parks, greenways, and open space to industrial economic development. That property currently has a house on it. It's zoned business light industrial, so this change would make the land use consistent with the zoning, and the property owner did, did request it. This is the change that went to PZ on the 18th. So I think that provides a little bit of an overview of the process that we've gone through, the changes that we're proposing. Ben and I will plan on coming back on the 8th for second reading and public hearing. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take those from you at this point.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, thank you very much to both of you and all the city staff that participated. Well done. My, my question is, keeping in mind, I'm not an expert in urban development and city planning and all that stuff. When I first asked and voted that staff do this, it was exactly the kind of exercise you undertook, so thank you. My question is, lacking that expertise, I, I think that you were exactly right in going to the neighbors and the property owners, et cetera, to make sure that everybody kind of seemed happy with the suggested changes. Given the needs of Longmont, is this what we need? Meaning, I don't know. It's, it's, it's truly a question to just vacuum your brain coming from the world of city planning. But is this the, is the, is the long-term plan here, is the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan in this area, is this going to handle our needs? High density, I know we need apartments. We might need less light industrial, I have no idea. But will it meet our needs?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Proton Bagley, that's a great question, and I think that my answer is maybe. You know, we did not, I think we are looking forward to doing a full comprehensive plan update so that we can really study the city's land supply needs. We can kind of get a better handle, you know, obviously, we look at data whenever we do land use amendments. We, we track that information. But I think we are excited to really delve into that and take a look and see, you know, what are our housing needs? What are our non-residential needs? What do we have currently? Are we oversupplied in one area, undersupplied? I think that we do have some data, you know, for instance, the housing need study that was done in 2012, that shows certainly that there may be a need for rental housing or low to moderate income housing, maybe in the form of higher density. So I think that we do have some information that would support some of these changes, you know, the increase in residential. I don't think that as part of this update, you know, we didn't do a full planning area analysis of every land use throughout the entire planning area, so it's a little hard to say with certainty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm just wondering if, you know, part of this process is, you know, kind of dog chasing its tail. When we change the comp plan, then it almost makes it a automatic thing that the city council and planning and zoning are going to change the zoning to match the comp plan as opposed to, you know, the justification really comes with a zoning request first. You know, it just seems a little backwards. And the other comment is really around what we've heard from the Mill Village neighborhood and also the challenges we see in adding more housing in this particular area of the city where it's been pointed out that there's not a great safe route to school without using an automobile. There is no public transportation except call-in ride, which, you know, is basically very limited. And that intersection is, you know, and having additional residential units in there really puts a stress on the internal street structure in that area. And I guess we don't even have a really good handle on whether or not there is capacity at that intersection of Third and 119 for this many additional potential housing units. And so to me, it seems a bit upside down to be doing this change when we know we're going to put additional stresses of capacity and traffic and everything in this area of town, where we know they're challenged already there. There's very little left in the capacity of, of that intersection, and yet there's not enough to do a major transportation. We have to almost go back to the, in, you know, my opinion, we'd almost have to go back to the drawing board and actually, before enacting any of these changes to high-density residential, do a traffic study to see if all of this was built out the way the comp plan says, what is going to be the traffic capacity? Because did that come into play at all when you were doing the planning?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, we did not conduct a traffic study for the land use amendments, although, you know, I, when we come back on the 8th, I can certainly have someone from Public Works here to answer those questions. I will say that, you know, these areas have been modeled using industrial economic development land uses, and particularly the medium-density residential adjacent to Mill Village. There was a traffic study done for the high-density residential proposal that came to council, and so that was actually a lot more units, obviously, than what would be allowed under medium density. So that did show that current and planned infrastructure improvements could handle that additional capacity. So there is some work there. And certainly with additional development, we would take a look at, at access and, and capacity issues. But I don't, I don't think that it would be fair to say, I mean, any development is obviously going to cause an increase in traffic in the area. But certainly, our transportation folks, when they're doing their transportation models, have taken a look at it from an industrial economic development standpoint, which has trip generation rates that may even exceed residential. So they have taken a look at that. But I'll have, make sure to try to have someone here from Public Works to speak, you know, a little bit more knowledgeably about that on the 8th.
But it really, when we see the traffic stuff, the traffic studies, it comes as piecemeal with development applications. And I know Ms. Brunks in the audience and very experienced representing clients, and I just think that sometimes it could be that there's somebody who gets a medium or high-density designation that might be the last one to build, and they will be left out because there is no additional capacity left. The city will not have to, they'd have to go back to the drawing board years in advance to add something to the street grid or CIP. And, you know, I, I feel very uncomfortable making some of these changes until we have some knowledge about what reality could be. And again, this is just, the comp plan is just a visionary document. Anything we approve could be changed at the end of property owner's request, again, to move back to a prior use or even a different use, right? So this is not necessarily set in stone either.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, I think, you know, the comp plan is a living document, that's how we refer to it. So property owners, residents, staff can propose changes that council needs to evaluate and, and they are ultimately the decision maker. So you are correct that you could approve these changes today and tomorrow a property owner could come in and request that everything gets changed to something completely different. That would be a request that obviously staff would evaluate, make a recommendation on, and then ultimately council would be the decision-making body.
Right. And then the other, my last comment is that I really would have liked to see this presented in a study session and maybe have some more members of the audience that would have been coming forward to explain, you know, neighborhood perspective, property owner perspective, and having just one speaker this evening, you know, being able to monitor this. I think it's too big an area when you're looking at 350-plus property owners and only 45 people show up to a meeting and some of them are from the same address. So we've got not even perhaps 10% of the property owners represented for something that would be a major change.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So do you have a table somewhere that shows the net gain or loss of each type of use available? So that you can say, like, proposed change one is industrial economic development to high-density residential? And so what the net change in industrial economic development would be throughout all the proposed changes, so that we know what the net new or the net loss of any particular land use is?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, we don't have that tonight, but that's something that we could easily prepare for the next meeting.
Mayor, council, you do have the option of, we can forward this to the July 8th or council desires, we could put this at a study session for you all to consider if you wanted more information. That's ultimately up to the city council on how they want to proceed.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The impression I'm getting, though, is that we were uncertain. There's a lot, a lot of chaos. City, city staff went and looked into whether or not we could make some order out of the chaos, given that we're having development and people want to start develop, or developing apartment buildings and people want to start building and developing their own property down there. And so it sounds to me like we've got some harmony in that area of town, which was kind of what I was thinking we were looking for. And then as we do the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, we'll get a bigger picture of what we need in and out of the city, and we can always make adjustments, is what I'm hearing. Right?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, in a sense, that is correct, although I will say, you know, unless council chooses to put a moratorium on development applications, changes that we make, if you approve these or some subset of these, it's not to say that a property owner still couldn't come. You know, we did, we did hear from some property owners that, you know, we really haven't contemplated a change. We may want to do something different, but the market isn't really ready for, we, we haven't really vetted what that change would look like, so we're not going to do anything at this time. So it could still happen. It could happen next month. It could happen as part of the larger comp plan update. It could happen after that. We really don't know that. But I think in a sense, you are correct. I mean, we did, we did do significant outreach with the neighbors. You know, we, we did work closely with the HOA at Mill Village. I know they've talked with the prospective developer that's requesting this change. So when you say harmony, I think that, you know, there's maybe some semblance of agreement there with what's being proposed versus kind of changes coming individually in a more random manner. But that's not to say that changes couldn't still come, so.
Well, I, personally, I think this has been a pretty high, a very contentious area of development in our city. And so if, by doing what you've just done, to, to steal your word, stealing from me, finding a little bit of harmony down there in South Longmont, I think it's a good idea. I move that we pass ordinance 2014-37.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Councilmember Christiansen?
I would like to see this be part of a study session before we vote on it.
Okay, well, we do have a motion that's been seconded, so I guess we have to, unless, I guess we need, we have to vote on the motion. Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes five to two with Councilmember Levinson and Councilmember Christiansen
I'm, I'm next up as well, so I'll just stand right here. The next item that was pulled from the consent agenda was land development code updates related to Section 1504030, which is the accessory use section of the code. Council may have seen some updates. I'm not exactly sure what the schedule of everything is, but last year, our department, in conjunction with the city attorneys, began taking a look at the development code, really in an effort to improve the document for users. You know, as you use a document, you find things that maybe don't work, you get feedback from the public, circumstances change. So we've been taking a look at several sections of our code, one of which is the accessory use section. So we obviously did an evaluation of this section of the code. We've gotten feedback from, from residents, from people applying for building permits, from building inspection staff as well as planning staff, some things that were confusing or maybe not working so well. So we proposed a number of changes. We worked with the Planning Commission over the course of two meetings to get their feedback on what, kind of what policy direction we may want to take with some of the items. So at their May 21st meeting, they did recommend approval of our changes, which you'll see. The ordinance contains the changes as they'd be currently written, so the ordinance basically repeals and reenacts this section of the code. So it's, what you see in the ordinance is the clean copy. If you want to look at the red line version, it's essentially, there's some minor formatting differences, minor word changing, but it's essentially a red line of what you see in the ordinance, which may be helpful to take a look at if you're trying to see what, what was stricken, what was added, what was moved around. I'd be happy to go through kind of the overall changes that we did, or I think the specific question that was raised was really related to accessory uses, so I'd be happy to talk about that and then do a presentation on the 8th when this comes back for second reading, whatever council prefers.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Aaron, a lot of this part of the land development code has no effect at all on any part of the city that's got an HOA. And so when we're looking at, you know, what uses are available in different zoning designations for residential, it really does narrow and specifically to properties that were built prior, probably till, I guess, maybe looking at before the 80s, essentially, and maybe even before, before that. But my concern is really that we see this, we had seen this a number of times, not just, you know, at council, that people are surprised when development applications come through and all of a sudden there was some clarification or update to the land development code and people weren't sure how it's going to work. And I think that when we had the speaker here from the historic East Side neighborhood, that is what I heard them say. And so what, I think, I, I think we need to, to go and do a little bit of vetting in the neighborhoods. And also, when I'm looking at some of the code, especially on things like detached ATMs and that would be an accessory use in the downtown central business district, I know that, you know, drive-through separate ATMs like that are kind of anti-pedestrian. And it seems to be making those suggestions without taking it to LDDA to say, well, what would this look like when LDDA is trying to, as a central business district, make things more pedestrian-friendly, for example? So I know that, you know, we have a, a system right now where the, some of the drive-throughs disrupt pedestrian right-of-way and those drive-through banking services have been there a very long time and grandfathered in. But again, there could be some assumptions made by future property owners and users about really what's going to be a good, what they could see as an accessory use, which will really be contraindicated to the, the goals of a central business district being more pedestrian-friendly and more focused on sidewalks and less things happening in the middle of, of parking lots, perhaps. So I just would like to see that we test, you know, road-test this, to see if, for example, on some of the residential uses, you could have an accessory unit that's two-thirds the size of the original building as opposed to 50% of the size. What would that actually look like on a piece of property where you've only got, you know, 48 or 49 feet worth of width and the side setback could only be five feet? How many, what would that actually look like if it was built everywhere that it could be built? And so those are just some of my concerns. So I would really like to not, I, I guess I'm, I'm going to move this to be taken up on second reading at a future time and, and let's go and, and talk to, I know John Clark has convened neighborhoods to collaborate on these things and just really inform people and also look at what the impacts on DDA would be for some of these central business district uses of accessory construction. So that, my motion is that we, I don't know, Eugene, I'm not going to do this correctly. I might need help. So I, I move that we set aside the motion for a date certain on second reading until such time as we can do a little test driving on this and, and get some more public input and some comments back from the neighborhoods and also the, the LDDA.
Okay, I guess the motion dies because lack of second?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, I'm, I'm assuming that this went through proper notice for, for hearings, the planning zone?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Santos, yeah, there was a public hearing at Planning Commission in May, so that was noticed per the development code. And then the public hearing on the 8th will also be noticed. You know, I, I should point out that while we didn't specifically take this neighborhood by neighborhood, really the changes that we're proposing are a result of direct comments and conversations that we've had with various groups over the years and the usability of the code. So for example, the ADU section is a really good example. Our current standard is a minimum size of 400 square feet and really what we've been in a maximum of one-third the gross floor area of the principal unit. What we've been finding is two things on either side. One, there is a movement for folks to build much smaller houses now, and there's some, you know, kind of developing, not necessarily technology, but there's some innovative ways that people are using space. And so we've had requests to do something, you know, in the order of maybe 200 square feet or something small. Or we've also been faced with a house that is small and therefore it can't meet, it's already small and it doesn't meet that minimum size, so they can't have an ADU at all. So we felt like that was an issue. So that's kind of in response to, you know, changing conditions. And then on the other side of that, we've had folks that maybe they have a very large house and they want to do an ADU within part of their house. You know, we're, we're seeing some changing demographics in Longmont and we're seeing people that maybe have kids that want to stay with them longer or they're becoming a caregiver for a parent or a grandparent and they're wanting to convert a section of their house. And that, that requirement is making it difficult often for people to, say, convert part of their basement because it's a full footprint. And so really, when we thought, you know, an accessory use is really subordinate to the principal, so it should be less than half, so we thought, let's just make- the principal, so it should be less than half, so we thought, let's just make the maximum half consistent with what we do for other accessory uses. So that's kind of a good example. We got a lot of feedback from people that were coming in our door, that wanted to do things that really, for whatever reason, our code wasn't accommodating, and so that's kind of how we proposed that change. Some of the additional language, like the ATM additional regs that we struck, most of those were just because we're never really using those. Like you said, some of the things are becoming more antiquated, and maybe at some point, ATMs will not be an accessory use in our code. Typically, you know, drive-throughs are really, would be part of a site plan for a bank or a fast food restaurant or something, that's not really what, what that ATM section is referencing, but, you know, some of those things were just more, they're just obsolete. We had a bunch of additional standards, making our code pretty verbose, and so that's why those were stricken. So we did get a lot of input on this, I don't want, I don't want you guys to think that this was just, you know, us sitting in a back room with our red pen. This was kind of years of getting feedback from people about, this is confusing, this isn't working, and so that's really the result of that effort.
As in cleanup, so.
Right.
And before people go hog wild, when it gets to like number five livestock, we're not talking residential chickens and things of that nature, that's a whole separate part of the code. You know, it says in here, 50 poultry, so, you know, don't go hog wild, they can have cattle, buffalo, ostrich, swine, goat, although pot-bellied pigs are allowed in the, you know, within city limits, so.
I should also note that that's primarily for educational.
Educational and research, exactly.
Not for an individual, not for you at your house, so.
So let's get some clarification before anybody, again, goes hog wild. So let's get some humor back in here. So I move ordinance 2014-38.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Lovison?
So Erin, I was a little confused about something that you said. You really do have to pull a permit to just have a dwelling unit in the basement. I mean, we have, we have neighbors that just sealed off the basement and put a locked door between top and bottom, and that was just fine years ago. Because you can't have two families or two different family units within the same building in a resident, in RLE or R1, if somebody decides that they're going to rent out their basement, there's, you know, that's not really truly an accessory dwelling unit because it's within the same building. I thought accessory dwelling units would be like adding on another structure that was detached, or above a garage, or something like that.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Lovison, accessory dwelling units can be separate, so we often think of, you know, granny flats as above a garage or something, like what you see in Prospect. They can also be integrated with the principal unit, so that could be a portion of, you know, the house that's carved off, it could be a basement that's separated. Really what, the building code is really kind of what comes into play. In order for it to be a true accessory unit, there are some building code requirements, particularly if it's integrated into the principal unit, in terms of fire separation, separate heating and cooling, other things that Jeremy Tamlin, when, when we're here on the 8th, could speak much more eloquently to. It is possible for people to finish their basement with a permit, and, you know, you can have a roommate situation. You know, I could, I could rent out part of my basement, it wouldn't be considered a dwelling unit. So for someone to really come in and build an accessory dwelling unit, that is basically a unit that goes on to our roles of, now the city of Longmont has, you know, we have 35,000 units, now we have 35,001. What you're describing where you're just, you know, you rented it to your, to your friend for a year, that's really just a roommate situation. It's still considered one unit, it's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's just a basement finish. So there are kind of two things going on.
Well, you may want to go back and look, because there have been a lot of these basement conversions over the years in a lot of the old neighborhoods that have basements, and they've been essentially, you know, rented out as a separate unit, you know, with a locked door between top and bottom, and I don't know how we've ever counted them, but that does frequently, I mean, that's just the reality of what's been going on because of the economy mostly.
And we're hoping that maybe some of these changes will enable, well, certainly maybe not everyone, but will enable some people that maybe want to do it legally, so that they have, you know, a full unit, that they can then say, we have two permitted units, that it will allow them to actually come pull the necessary permits, they'd be following building code, we'd have an option to inspect that and look at it and make sure it's done right, that, whereas that wasn't an option in the past because of our size requirements. We're hoping that some of these changes will enable people to be more compliant with the building code.
Right, okay, thanks. But I'm not, I'm not going to vote yes to send this forward, because I really think we need to kind of test-drive some of the setback requirements and see what reality is before we go through.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I just got one question, it's important, I'm going to vote for it, because I don't know, I'm not like city staff. So I'm noticing on page 10, there's an animal unit chart, and it says the maximum number of animals. And it says, note, young animals shall not be counted until they are weaned. So my question is, ostrich is in here, and my question is, are ostriches weaned? And at what age?
Nice.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Portman Bagley?
I'm kidding, I have no idea.
I've never seen a permit for any animals for research, so I honestly don't know that. But you can bring that back on the 8th if you want.
I think I'm going to vote for it, but, you know, we can, we can instruct staff to go look that up.
I don't know if ostriches can be weaned.
Okay, move the question.
Yeah. Just do it.
Got to move it.
Did we, somebody move it?
No, yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, he moved it, yeah, he did. Yeah, yeah.
Long time ago.
It's been so long, I forgot.
Long time.
Okay, that passes, six to one, Councilmember Lovison descending.
We could be out of here a long time.
Thank you, Erin.
It's time for general business.
Mayor, item 11A is the portico annexation referral, which was pulled, so we'll go to item 11B, the proposed code amendment to the allowed uses in Chapter 1504 of the land development code, and Don Burchett at the podium.
It's almost like being on stage. Thank you. Don Burchett, Planning Development Services, here tonight to talk to you a little bit about a request we received from the Longmont Housing Authority and their director, Michael Reese, requesting that the city council consider and direct city staff to work on a code amendment to land development code that would allow for affordable housing to be built within the mixed industrial zoning district. Just as a point of reference for the city council, the residents and people who would like to propose code amendments to the city's land development code are allowed to submit these kind of requests to the city council, and for you to consider them and then determine whether or not city staff resources would be used to review those and bring those back to you for consideration at a later date. And so this is the typical process for when we receive such a request from someone that is not associated as a city staff member or already been directed by the city council to work on such a matter. So tonight, we are here to see if we can get some direction from you on whether or not you are willing to allow us to work on this kind of a change and to bring that back for you. One of the things that I wanted to point out for you is that currently, the city of Longmont land development code does not allow affordable housing in four zoning districts. That is the public zoning district, which would be typically what our properties are zoned, that we own as a city. The general industrial properties, which would be, for example, the airport, the mixed industrial, which is what we're talking about tonight, and then the final is the regional commercial zoning district, which would be, for example, Walmart North is zoned, regional commercial, as well as the mall itself is currently zoned, regional commercial. So those are the only districts where currently affordable housing is not allowed within those districts. It is allowed in the business light industrial zoning district, which is one of our areas where we see typically like our seagates, our engines, things like that, or zone business light industrial. So affordable housing is allowed in those, in that industrial zoning district, but not in the other, general industrial, mixed industrial. So while I can't necessarily give you a recommendation tonight, because again, we would like to spend a little time looking on this if this is the council's pleasure, but I am here tonight to answer your questions and to see whether or not the council's interested in letting us work on this. As I noted in our memo to you, the city staff is currently working on this specific chapter right now that would be affected if we did have to review this. So to add this to our workload would not add any additional real expense to this, and it would be something that we could work into the work program as we have it right now. And with that all in my presentation, see if you have any questions.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs, just a couple of quick questions, just to be clear, this would not require anything of property owners, developers, it's not an inclusionary zoning type issue, right? It's just permitting people to have a use, use by right to build affordable housing, that's it.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Portman Bagley, that's correct, this is not placing a requirement on anybody, it is allowing them to be able to construct it if they wish.
And the purpose is, I mean, is the idea to, you know, it's less desirable to live there, so it would make for cheaper housing? What's the, what's the purpose?
In the.
How does that magically become affordable? What's the economic driver?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Portman Bagley, in this specific properties case, the housing authority purchased this approximately five or six years ago, and it was an extended stay hotel. So they were able to get it for a very good price, which allowed them then to be able to purchase it and be able to use it if the code is changed to be permanent affordable housing, where right now it's more of a interim affordable housing component in their portfolio of properties that they manage.
Okay, last question, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that it gives the ability for the affordable housing folks, whether it be the housing authority or anyone else, to be able to look at all properties within the city and determine if there's a need and a location for affordable housing in an area that currently is an affordable housing desert, that they could look at these properties now and make a determination, is this somewhere that makes sense and provides a need for people to live in an area where potentially some of them could work?
Okay, and then last question, would this lead to a situation where, I mean, I'm thinking of the presentation where we've been getting, the ongoing presentation by Brian Hanson, where he lives in an area where it's mixed use, it's, you've got light slash, he argues, heavy industrial next to a residential apartment building. So my question is, would this build, would doing this allow for more instances where we have apartment buildings and affordable housing, low-income housing, next to areas in town that are arguably industrial?
Mayor Portman Bagley, members of council, the simple answer is yes, but that's part of what we need to look at when we're deciding on whether or not to make a recommendation to, to adopt this. Those kind of impacts are things that, if we're going to establish this as a use that's allowed, some of the questions may, that we're going to have to look at is, one, is it a permitted use, is it a use that automatically can go into a zoning district? Or is it going to be a limited use, where we can put conditions on that use and allow it under certain conditions? Or is it a conditional use, where it actually would have to go through a public hearing process, where the neighbors would be able to come to the planning zone and commission state their concerns about the impacts, and planning commission be able to hear that and make a decision based on the information presented at that hearing? So that's the broad, you know, perspective that we need to look at and anticipate if we're going to recommend this code change. We may also need to have other kinds of review criteria associated with how we would cite those, where they are located, what distances they need to be away from other uses that could have significant impacts on them. So those are things we would need to look at.
So if we vote tonight to direct staff to process the application for this code revision, it's not doing anything other than having staff look at it, collect the data, and report back?
So if council, as, as I would see it, unless you give us different direction, is that we would work on coming up with a suggested revision to the land development code, that then we would vet through planning commission, and we could bring to you back as either a study session item, showing this is what we looked at, and this is what planning commission recommended, which then we could go to an ordinance, or we could bring it back as an ordinance, first reading after going through that planning commission process, and then if the council wanted to, as was discussed tonight, you could either approve it on first reading and set it for second, or you could also postpone that second and ask for a study session. I think it's better if you have concerns about what we're going to bring back, that you would do it at a study session first, before we draft the ordinance.
Well, if I hadn't spoken first, I would have moved that just now, but I'm going to let my colleagues speak.
Councilmember Chris Anton.
I appreciate Councilman Bagley's question about creating a hazardous zone, but this particular area, which I'm very familiar with, is actually kind of isolated in that there's only one entrance, it's near the daycare center off Sunset, and so that's the, the only industry, industry business near there, directly on that road is the daycare center, and this requires them to get in there, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity, actually, to expand the Housing First program and create further affordable housing, and I know Sean Lewis has been working on this, and I think it could create a really interesting thing. In addition, it's adjacent to the new shopping center, where they could get jobs, people could possibly get jobs. I think it's a very good era, area to introduce some housing, it's right across from the, or very near to the stadium, and Greenways and things like that, it's a, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Councilmember Lovison?
So why wouldn't you just request the zoning change? Wouldn't that be simple? And did we, did council violate some statute in code when we said we, we acknowledged them and participated financially in them buying this as a, I mean, I assumed it was always going to be long-term housing with infused services for people, that these are not folks that were being turned out after six months or after a year, that they had an unlimited timeline to be at this, what essentially was a long-stay hotel?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Lovison, as far as I know, the, the units that are being operated by the Longmont Housing Authority are meeting the conditions of the approval for the zoning district that they were located in, which was that this was temporary housing for people in need, and that there were restrictions on the length of their stay.
Okay.
And that is what was represented to us, and that is our understanding. If there's something else that's going on, no one has brought that to our attention, and no one has investigated that, so we are assuming that.
That they're moving, they're cycling people in and out?
Exactly.
Okay. So why, why instead of looking at allowing affordable housing in mixed industrial, why wouldn't you just, in this case, make it, make a global change for the whole city based on a request where that particular property owner or entity could just request zoning change to, I don't know, would it be, it wouldn't really be spot zoning, it would be maybe medium-density residential, just like the other properties in the comp plan update have done it for small numbers of acres, to change the zoning? Why wouldn't you just change the zoning?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Lovison, I can't speak to every change that you looked at tonight on the comprehensive plan, but I can say that we've spent a number of years working with the housing authority on options for this property, and based on our review, there was no land use designation that currently exists on the property that would accommodate a change to anything other than one of the, one of the zone districts that not necessarily accommodates affordable housing, as contemplated by the housing authority. Our concern was that, one, they would have to do a land use amendment and change a small area to be high-density residential, for example, and then. And then that would be a very small area rezoned. I think then you are looking at a potential challenge for spot zoning based on the size and its proximity to all the other land uses. You are affording one property a specific benefit that no one else has. One of the items that we had originally talked to them about, and I believe was also mentioned to the mall, was why don't we look at changing the mall and that whole area to an MU zoning district? That would have accommodated not only housing for the affordable housing folks, would also have allowed integration into the mall if they would have wanted that, and then opportunity for the adjacent properties to redevelop. We never really got a lot of traction from the property owners on that, and we did not see that there was enough support of that to actually bring that forward as a suggestion for city council or the planning commission to consider. Based on the feedback we were getting, we felt that you would have had a lot of people opposed to that, and it probably would not have gone very far.
Well, I'm also looking at what's happening up and down I-25. I mean, near the orchards, they've got massive amounts of multifamily units going up, you know, parking lot away from the movie theaters and the shopping. And to me, that was not a, originally, that was not an unusual proposal. My, I guess, piggybacking off of previous comments from council members on topics we talked about tonight, maybe it would be good if we're looking at this to see where all the mixed industrial zones are? And whether or not, when you're looking at residential housing, even if it's affordable, we still have the same standards. There's gotta be a park nearby. There's gotta be, you know, access to transportation. There's gotta be some kind of semblance of, of what looks like a neighborhood. You know, you can't just say, you know, we're gonna put you next to Love Canal and that'll be affordable housing. I think that that really narrows the options for people that have different price points in what they're looking for, for housing units. So I, and I think that in fact, you know, you might, might have a more of a, an opportunity to look at slum conditions that could develop very easily without being integrated into other residential areas, too. So I have some very large concerns about this being implemented citywide, but I guess I'll take a, I mean, I'll vote to take a look at it, however, I'd also be interested in, is every single hotel, a long-stay and short-stay hotel, is that considered mixed industrial? Because it seems strange that a long-stay hotel would be under mixed industrial.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, an extended stay hotel is allowed in the business light industrial district as well as the mixed industrial, and I believe some of our commercial zoning districts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Polly Christensen's statements. I think this is a great opportunity for this particular property. You know, we need more affordable housing and desperately in this city, and I think affordable housing next to the future mall is a good thing. You've got people that can walk to shopping, that can walk to their jobs potentially. I'm gonna be voting for this.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, Councilmember Levinson, I would encourage you to call Michael Reese and see the plans that they have. I know Wendell Pickett's here, and he's on the Longmont Housing Authority board. And see the plans that the Longmont Housing Authority has for this property. It's not even close to Love Canal, and to call it even that is quite disturbing. And I believe Councilmember Moore is the liaison, and hopefully he has seen those plans that they have for this property. They're quite nice. And, you know, having been the former liaison and actually rotating on boards, which I would encourage you to do if you have the opportunity, which you haven't had, to out, and actually get out and see these plans, and you'd be quite surprised if you actually make that effort. The, a semblance of a neighborhood with these plans that they actually have, you know, the suites, if you've been to them, and I'm not quite sure if you have, they have a pool. They have barbecue pits. It's actually quite nice out there. What they're proposing and what Don has mentioned that would be a challenge of spot zoning, I would be in favor of actually seeing what staff can come up with as far as whether or not mixed industrial. And I'm not saying that we should put all affordable housing in mixed industrial, because there would be, whether or not, you don't wanna put any type of housing next to heavy industrial or what have you. I know Brian Hanson has issues and, you know, and while he was on council, had a personal agenda regarding a business, which was very inappropriate. I would like to see what staff comes up with. The Housing Authority has a great plan, and I'd like to move that we direct staff to bring back some recommendations to council regarding this topic.
I'll second that. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So what are the options? Is it an option to make affordable housing a conditional use permitted in a mixed industrial versus a use by right? Is that a possibility?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, yes, that is.
So that could actually address some of the issues, having a manufacturing facility with hammers all night going is-
Yes, and those would be the, some of the things that we would need to think about when we're crafting a change to the ordinance would be those kind of impacts. And then explain those to you and show you kind of what we've walked through as far as options and alternatives and really the impacts that we see by making this change so that the council can go into this knowing, you know, everything that we do about why this is either a good idea or not. And at this point, again, we're not making a recommendation, we're just asking if you want us to, to work on it.
Yeah, I think it, making, having a conditional use designation would be a way to alleviate some of the concerns that have been expressed here. And so I will be supporting, moving forward on this.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And it just dawned on me that, yeah, as I heard some of the council members talk and reflected, this will allow, and we need low-income housing. If we pass this, the recommendation is that we should go forward, it'll allow the Longmont Housing Authority to develop right there more long-term or more affordable housing right there next to the mall. It'll make refinancing easier, and they can then build parks or whatever it is that makes a community. So I think that, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it, too. Let's see what happens.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's one second, let's vote. Okay, that passes 7-0.
Mayor, the next item on your agenda is board and commission appointments, presented by myself, Don Quintana, deputy city clerk. We announced for vacancies, you interviewed applicants on June 7th. I just wanted to note a couple corrections before we go through the procedure of voting on appointments. There are actually 22 vacancies instead of the 21 noted in the council communication. The other correction is the Housing Authority term ends, there's a typo there, it is ending 2019, not 2017. So our first board is the Art and Public Places Commission. There are five regular terms ending June 30th, 2017. You have ballots at your dais. If you will please vote for five, we have six applicants, and we have Harold Azar Kaya.
That's a sucker like Sean.
So we all voted Baxter, McKinney, Swain, Mathwick, Wagner. Santos voted Baxter, McKinney, Mathwick, Swain, and Wagner. Councilmember Bagley voted Baxter, Mathwick, McKinney, Swain, and Wagner. Councilmember Christensen voted for Baxter, Mathwick, McKinney, Swain, and Wagner. Councilmember Finley voted Baxter, Mathwick, McKinney, Swain, and Wagner. Mayor Thomas voted Baxter, Mathwick, McKinney, Swain, Wagner. One, two. I feel like I only have six ballots. Did I miss somebody? Two, three, four, five, am I missing? Ah, thank you. And Councilmember Levinson, yes. Voted Baxter, Mathwick, McKinney, Swain, and Wagner. So your five appointees will be Trusa Baxter, Andrea Mathwick, Matt McKinney, Eliza Swain, and Yvette Wagner for terms ending June 30th, 2017. The next board is the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. You have two regular member terms ending June 30th, 2017. Vote for two first, please, yes. We'll do the unexpired member on a separate ballot.
You put it on there, yes.
Two first.
Two first. I don't know if I can handle that.
You can write the word on there anyway.
Okay.
Still up 70. Are you checking? I'm checking, too.
Check it.
Thank you, Sandy. Councilmember Moore voted for Flower, Motte Ferry. Finley voted for Duber and Flower. Christensen voted for Flower, Motte Ferry. Levinson voted for Evans and Flower. Bagley selected Evans and Motte Ferry. Santos voted Duber and Flower. And Coombs voted Flower and Evans. So Mark Flower received, one, six votes, so he will definitely take one of those terms. We have a tie between Evans and Motte Ferry for the second regular member, so if you'd vote between those two. So Moore voted for Motte Ferry. Levinson voted Evans. Coombs voted for Evans. Christensen voted Motte Ferry. Finley voted Motte Ferry. Santos voted Motte Ferry. And Bagley voted Evans. So the second regular member will be Motte Ferry. And now we need to get our unexpired member. Would you like to vote again or select you voting? Okay. For the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2015.
And is Motte Ferry the alternate regular?
No.
No. It's a regular.
Regular member.
So Motte Ferry and Flower?
It's an unexpired term.
It's an unexpired.
Not an alternate, yeah.
So now we have to vote between Duber and Evans?
Yes, so the remaining people would be Duber or Evans, yes, thank you. Do you want me to tell you what your vote was?
Their term is expiring, right?
Evans, his term is expiring, yes. All right, Councilmember Bagley voted for Evans. Moore voted for Evans. Levinson voted for Evans. Coombs voted for Duber. Santos voted for Duber. Christensen voted for Duber, drum roll. Finley voted for Duber. So the unexpired term will go to Thomas Duber. All right, the next board is the Board of Environmental Affairs. We did not receive any applicants for that, so we will re-advertise that vacancy. We have one vacancy on Cable Trust Board, also no applicants for that, so we'll re-advertise for that. The next vote is for the Downtown Development Authority. We have two regular member terms ending June 30th, 2018, six applicants. Moore voted Prado Williams. Bagley voted Prado Samori. Levinson voted Gallegos Williams. Coombs voted Samori Williams. Santos voted Prado Samori. Finley selected Sample and Samori. And Christensen voted Gallegos and Williams. So the two winners with the most votes are Alex Samori and Baxter Williams for those two terms. Next is the General Employee Retirement Board, one at large position. We have two applicants. The term ends June 30th, 2019. And just to note that one of those applicants could not be, has been interviewed before Moore voted Brewer. Levinson voted Brewer. Bagley voted Brewer. Coombs voted Brewer. Santos voted Brewer. Christensen voted Brewer. Finley voted Lawson. So your appointee is Tony Brewer. The next board is the Library Advisory Board. There is one regular term.
I don't think we have a ballot.
Yeah. And there's one, one applicant, Nancy Carter.
I move Nancy. I don't have ballots.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
So it's Nancy.
Hey, Nancy.
Thank you. Longmont Housing Authority, same scenario, we have-
I'm James Purdy, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're just high-dacking this now.
That's fine. The next one is the Money Accumulation Pension Board, again, one member, one app.
Aye.
Great. Museum Advisory Board, we have two applicants, we have three vacancies.
We don't even have ballots for that.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I actually moved that we add Amber Shipko to the ballot. She interviewed for the Art and Public Places Board and said that she would be willing to serve on the Museum Advisory Board during her interview. And so I moved that we put her on the ballot. And I moved that we actually appoint Brian Bowles, Michelle Vessels, and Amber Shipko to the Museum Advisory Board.
Okay, it's a move consecutive?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. You're fast. Next, so we have three appointees, Brian Bowles, Michelle Vessel and then Amber Shipko. Uh, Transportation Advisory Board, two members, two vacancies, two applicants.
I move Buzz and Gary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The last and final board. I wonder what's gonna happen. Water Board, one vacancy, one applicant. All in favor?
Eugene's cringing over there.
All in favor? Could I just see those hands again? Thank you. And that concludes your Board and Commission appointments. Thank you very much.
Valerie could have done that.
Thank you, Don. Okay, now it's time for final call. Public Invited to Be Heard. Is there any from public who'd like to speak this time? Please come forward.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. So, I appreciate you guys still being here. My name is Tristan Burris. I'm, I live at 1303 Carolina Avenue. And I'm a psychotherapist here in town and have lived in Longmont for the last 18 years. Um, I wanted to just bring back around the whole mosquito spring. And, um, now that we're in mosquito, um, season. And, um, just to remind all of us the importance of public education and prevention for the West Nile virus. Um, using safer methods to eradicate the vector mosquitoes that carry that virus. Um, and I did see in one of the spring bills, um, in the city, um, earlier the spring mention of some prevention, the four D's and preventing mosquito bites and all of that. And I wanted to thank you guys for that because I think that was new. Um, and I just, I wanted to share my continued concern about the weekly spraying of pesticides and specifically the spraying of permethrin, which is a known carcinogen, um, throughout the city. Um, I want to encourage a more and more effective larviciding program, which is, um, treating the mosquitoes at that larvicide stage in the water before they're flying. It's just a much more effective method. And I know we have that, but just more and more effective so that we're not having to spray. Um, so I am, I am just a really strong, uh, proponent of just the preventative measures. And wonder if we could maybe set up a committee, or I know you guys have limited time, you know? Um, some kind of a committee that could commit, could commit to researching this problem, both on the West Nile and the seriousness of that virus. Um, and the spraying and the larviciting and just have a group of some kind that could, um, get together and look at all the different sides. Um, I'd really like to see something like that to just take it to the next step. Because it's something that we've, as citizens, have spoken up about for years now. Um, I'm wondering if that could be possible. Um, and, you know, just, just fighting a toxin, a toxic situation of a virus with another toxin, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. And I'd like to, I'd really like to be more creative than that. And really invite us to do something maybe that other cities have already done with public spray, so. Um, I'm just wondering who I might follow up with?
Well, that would be the city manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, super. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at Public Invited to Be Heard right? Yeah. Okay, I guess that ends, uh, Public Invited to Be Heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you Mayor Kooms. I had a couple of constituents that had some questions that I, uh, I just wanted to ask so that they knew that I asked and there was an answer for them. Uh, street sweepers. Is there any way we can have a written schedule in our city line that tells people when their streets will be swept so they can get their cars off the streets? And can that not occur on trash days in neighborhoods?
We can definitely work on that one.
Okay. The next one was, um, and we, we get this perennially, is the question on RVs parked on streets for long periods of time. Is there any way that we can come up with some type of, um, ordinance that would limit the number of days a, an RV could be on the same street?
There's an ordinance that exists, but the nuance is, is as long as they move it, they can just move it essentially a space up and and it resets some time limits based on what we've seen. Um, I know I've received an email today on that. Um, Assistant City Manager Sean Lewis has received another email about that, and so we are actually working that.
Okay.
And we will bring some options to the council.
Thank you. And then for my business of the week, we have the Flatirons Family Pharmacy, new pharmacy in town at 603 Ken Pratt Boulevard. Go check 'em out.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you Mayor Kooms. I guess I just wanted to pu- uh, put something in my fellow council members head, uh, heads. And that is, uh, we're all, we're all the Borg. The, uh, so, uh, and I, I think city staff is aware of this, but it came to my attention right before we came to city council that we passed an ordinance that allowed, that changed the brewing establishment guidelines that allows for, it made it a little bit easier to have a brew pub. Um, the problem is that city, the city staff, wasn't us, I don't think, but uh, somehow somebody got approved for a brewery between the two schools, the two school district buildings. And I know that they didn't like it, the Kanamotos didn't like it, and the children's parents probably didn't like it. So my question is, moving forward, you know, now that we've basically, uh, you know, uh, uh, a home for every family and a brew pub for every building, um, what are we gonna do to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future?
So this situation actually is a little more, um, complicated than the ordinance that we were talking about. Uh, I'm gonna ask Joni Marsh, um, to come up and, and go over the details.
And he punts, awesome.
Essentially what, essentially what you have here is that based on the classification of the brewery, that license is actually granted by the state. And then when you look at the, the specific school in question here, they're associated with the school district. And so tho- that process doesn't go through us either because there's some exemptions for the school district. And so what you have is, is you have a school in a use that allows that type of activity versus the activity going into a use where the school exists.
Would that have happened had we not changed the ordinance?
Yes.
Would it have happened anyway?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question is, how do we fix it? Because I don't think it's a good public policy decision to have bars next to schools or in between schools.
So I, I think, uh, this is probably a topic that we're gonna have to bring back for council to look at in more detail. Because what you have is, um, I believe that's MI. That zoning classification is MI. Um, and it's industrial. And so you actually have a school going into an industrial zoning classification. And so beyond just the issue of the brewery, I mean, there, there are also other conflicts that can potentially occur with other uses that are allowed in the MI uh, zoning classification. Um, and that is the piece that is, that is not, they don't necessarily, they don't have to go through our procedures in terms of allowing those types of uses into that type of classification. And, and so what you get is, you get a school going into a classification where these other things are allowed by right.
So we need local control, that's what you're telling us. Local control issue.
Correct. Liquor Board and the school district.
I would just add a little bit to what Harold said in terms of the conflict with the MI and, and it's interesting because we, obviously when we put the code together back in 2001, charter schools were not exactly something that were, um, what they are today. And so all of the charter schools, or at least the three we've seen to date, have all located in industrial areas in Longmont. As opposed to residential zoning districts where all of the, um, all of your local elementary, middle and high schools are. So if you look at our zoning map and our comp plan, you know where those are gonna go. We actually had a section, have a section in our current code, even though we can't, um, enforce that, that really talks about the onus is on the school to make sure that their site design and is mitigating the impacts they'll have on the other uses in the MI district, existing or future, because really the MI district is, is for those industrial uses. So as Harold points out, we, we kinda have a flipped scenario. And unfortunately between, um, the way the state statutes are written for the liquor licensing and for placement of schools, we're the odd man out a little bit on this one.
Councilmember Levison. Thank you Mayor. So I wanted to, um, let everybody know how, um, everyone had a, I had a productive conference at, um, attendance at, uh, car ministry conference and staff did, and I want to congratulate, we had staff presentation by Rego Riel, and it was very well received at a branding session. I want to congratulate him on that. And then, um, in general, great sessions and, um, a lot of, um, good information. And we were sorry not to have Polly and Bagley here, but I know that you held down the fort and thank you for doing that. And it was lovely and cool up there last week. So I think they had almost a thousand people, uh, municipal officials attending, which was, um, quite a good turnout. And, um, there's some, uh, very interesting things on the, um, horizon. Especially interesting to me is a project from University of Colorado Denver with a professor Benoit Jacob, who's doing, um, some analysis on, um, evaluating fiscal health of cities with different components and trying to evaluate how healthy your city is from a fiscal standpoint. And, um, uh, I think they're actually asking for some cities to participate. So I'm hoping that we would throw our name into the hat for that because I think we could be a really good example because we have great financial management and also looking at the stress of a natural disaster in a city. As far as fiscal health, I think would be an interesting component to the study. So I would encourage staff, I don't know, do I need to make a motion to encourage staff to pursue that with Benoit Jacob? But, um, please do, because I think that we would be an excellent candidate for, um, them to do that in-depth, uh, study. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you Mayor. Um, yeah, the, the conference was very well attended and we, we all went to several different, uh, sessions and learned quite a bit. I'd also like to congratulate the mayor um, for his victory in the 5K run. And, well, actually, five plus K run. Um, I, I believe, uh, it was a 5K run, but I think the mayor ran a little bit further than the 5K run, a little off course. So he has to retain his title next year at, at, at CML. And didn't Rego run as well? No. But, yeah, I understand that the mayor, uh, even at altitude, is, is still uh, in, in great shape. So congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, you know, I only run one chase, so nice job.
Well, I have to thank my bike coach for getting me in this great shape for high altitude running and biking.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you Mayor. I also forgot to add that at the, um, elected officials luncheon on Friday, two, um, students from St. John the Baptist Church were awarded a $500, um, certificate towards college, uh, with the If I Were Mayor contest. And, um, upon full disclosure, I was asked to be one of the judges. However, I've judged in previous years, totally no names, no locations attached to the essays. And in fact, um, the day I was judging, I had, uh, the student from, uh, Mr. Duffy's, um, American Government Class, a senior from NIWAT, helping me judge the essay. So it wasn't just me judging him. And I'm hoping that we can invite the, um, award winners to, uh, come and read their essays. I did mention that to the families and I think that they would like to do that. And they did a, a great job. And then they had two other winners, one from Golden and one from Parker.
Great. Well, I just want to thank the staff for organizing that, making our packets all condensed and organized with all the maps of where we had to be, when we had to be. I mean, I just think they just do a really good job of putting that stuff together and, and making it easy for us to, uh, to attend these conferences. So again, thanks and kudos to Maria and and already have worked on that so hard, so, uh, appreciate that. Uh, I guess with that, um, city manager, any remarks?
Uh, I do have a couple of remarks, Mayor, Council. Um, one is about the broadband initiative that we're working on. Um, that has had some articles recently in the Wall Street Journal, um, and other national and international publications about the work we're doing. Also during Rego, after Rego's branding session, um, we had a folk, um, an individual from Open Media, um, Colorado that, that came up and said how, uh, that basically said the work that we're doing here in Longmont is, is, we're again leading the state. And that they're conducting interviews with various people and they're bringing up our broadband initiative and how they want to engage more with us. Um, and really start talking about the broadband initiative. So it is, the excitement is really taking off and, and there's a lot of tension on our community in terms of this project. Um, the second thing that I wanted to let you know is that, as we know, the stormwater uh, vote is occurring tonight and it is, um, passing by 70.5%. And, and so I want to thank the citizens for voting on this. And um, as Dale said to me earlier, this is not a Texasism, this is a Dale-ism. It's time to get her done. And so I, I just had to point that out because um, somebody would attribute it to me being from Texas. So, anyway, we are, we are really excited about this and we have a lot of work ahead of us. And so that's a couple of pieces of good news that I wanted to pass on to you.
Thank you. Same with you, Mayor.
No comments, Mayor.
Alright, this meeting's adjourned.